We'll go ahead and hop into the, I guess, the consent agenda.
No, no, I'm not saying can jump into the consent agenda. Just do Tim's motion now.
Okay, so uh we'll hop into Tim's motion for the consent agenda. Um, go ahead, Tim.
So under Robert's, Robert's rules of orders, township can establish consent agenda, which essentially locks in everyday ordinary business that you guys melt every meeting into one approval. So you would have maybe four or five items on one, the consent agenda, and you only have to vote on that once. So then instead of taking every item one by one, you vote to approve everything. Your, the policy that we put together would provide trustees with a consent agenda prior to the meeting. So that if there are items on the consent agenda that you would like to discuss, or you feel that needs to be pulled out subtly and considered, you're willing to do that. And then you want to do it at the meeting as rather than before the meeting, you're, you're allowed to do that as well. You just can make a motion and pull something off a consent agenda, and you can have discussion or other consideration about it as needed. So it's just a simply a way to kind of streamline the meetings with everyday business put into one single votes and approval. And that way we not, we're not taking every approval minutes and all our, our like, you know, kind of record keeping all separately and we're just doing it one amongst them.
And this is consistent with other townships as well as the county, right?
Do we, do we still read each one separately like?
No, no. What we, we would need is a motion, um, accepting the consent agenda, and then we move on.
And for instance, the minutes that we just, you know, approved, we could put that in there too, correct? Okay.
I still have the list even my minutes.
Yeah, you have to show them, yeah.
And they will be listed on the actual printout of the agenda, itemized.
So how are the public going to know what we're approving on that consent agenda?
Well, because we publish the, we publish each one of our agendas and it shows as part of the consent agenda. So the public will see that because we always put out, we always publish our agendas well in advance of the meetings.
Okay, so is this meeting laid out in that format? Is that what we're dealing with this initially? Uh, and the public presentation is actions are obviously separate from that. And then we hop into department mental updates, and then new business is all under a consent agenda, correct? So all these items, one through six are under the consent agenda. And then other agenda items are split out because they are not eligible to be a consent agenda item.
They would typically be, they would typically be items that we would anticipate that the board would have questions on. Or there are weighty issues that we want the public to hear a discussion on that particular issue, whatever it may be.
But any item can be brought off of the consent agenda.
Yes.
Right, to have further discussion. So it's not, it's, it's not set in stone that even if you're on the consent agenda item, that you're not going to be discussed in front of them.
Right. And typically at the outset of the meeting, Kate, you can chime in, but at the outset of the meeting, if Dr. Campbell has had an issue that he wanted to pull off of that, he would request at that time, I would like to have this item pulled off and just put into other agenda items from the consent agenda.
Okay.
And one of the objectives is, is it not to streamline the process to allow for more public input? So that you all don't have to sit here and listen to us go through each item one by one, when it's generally pretty routine. And Mr. Painter, County Commissioner was here last meeting and he amplified the fact that it does save them some time uh at the county level and they do it as a matter of routine.
So just to kind of run through like what we would have this evening on our consent agenda as an example perhaps. Would be an approval of the payment of payroll, which we do all the time. Um, the approval of payment of uh the month of October uh bills. Uh, so, so payments, and then we have a, a request, a, a motion from uh Craig uh to accept the resignation. John to buy a trailer. And Eddie to accept the resignation. So I, I mean, it's just kind of.
In my auditor fees. Audit fees.
And I would, I would assume with this board, we're going to hop into most of these, most of the time, probably.
Well, we also get, we also get reports on at least two of those that are, that are major, you know. Like the expenditure, the fiscal officers request for payment of payroll. We also get, you know, the um uh, the report of bills that are being paid. So those are all parts of bills that even if the public wanted to see those, they could actually just request it. Um, or it can be attached to the um, to the actual um agenda at the beginning of, you know, when we, when we publish it.
This is, since this is new, this can be changed at any time.
Right. What, what we're doing here with this motion is to set the consent agenda policy that we've put together. So if we want to change that policy, obviously that can be done.
Right.
Or we want to do away with the consent agenda, I would also be done.
Correct.
So this is something new designed to save a little time and give you all more of an opportunity to participate in part.
Okay, um, I'm going to want a little public input on this. So uh do we have any public comment on the consent agenda? Any opinions? Please. Stan, I'm sorry, come on up. We're, we're trying to, we, we zoom these and everybody can hear you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Hopefully, hopefully it's on.
Okay, when did you decide you were going to do this?
We discussed it in the last meeting.
Sorry?
We discussed it at the last meeting.
Okay, and who set it, who set it up? I mean, you know, is it just going to be payment of monies? Or are you just going to ring anything you want in there that you want to sneak through, which is what it looks like? Uh, it looks like a sneak through. Um, you can slip, don't, don't, don't laugh. I mean, that's, that's what a down one looks like. I mean, you've got payment of payrolls, fair enough. Um, payment of bills is fair enough. Um state audit is bills, okay? Resignations, um, they shouldn't really be on, on that sort of agenda. That's something that's normally discussed. Um, and you know, purchase of equipment.
The only thing I would disagree with you on is that when it comes to resignations, we don't discuss those because those, those are generally speaking uh employee uh situations. So we don't really bring those up. We never have. Um, but when it comes to the Debbie's uh payroll, that doesn't change.
No, no, I mean, but those things were always on the list before.
And they'll always be on the list.
They'll, they'll appear every month. Like this, and then you'll just go, and it'll be done.
Right. So they'll appear, we'll just move through.
And they'll be publicized well in advance to the public. So for instance, you know, we, we wouldn't put a fifty thousand dollar automobile on the consent agenda. I don't think that would be something we would do. But uh, you know, two thousand five hundred dollar trailer, you know, pulled behind, maybe.
Well, this one's on, this one's seventy three hundred.
Right, I'd use that as an example, right.
Um, okay, we'll, we'll keep our eyes on that then. Okay.
Yeah, and as long as those things are, are listed there, any one of us, and I suspect the way we do business, anyone in the audience would be allowed to recommend that we pull it off the consent agendas to discuss as well.
Do I have any other public comment on the consent agenda?
I don't want.
Please.
I guess because I'm used to doing it the other way, and I like the idea that the public does know what we're approving and not approving on all of them. I don't know. It's I, I kind of agree, I agree with Stan, you know, it's, it's like, are we hiding something like, you know, what I'm paying out for my audit this year?
No, it appears right there.
Right, but the public here doesn't know that right now.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean a little in the middle on this, I think. And I, I suggested this too, so that's.
This was your idea.
This is my idea. This is really saying something. Um, it's kind of like, it, it's strike, it's hit me on the same, the same line as um a little bit on the, like the nepotism policy where it's like, it's, it's a trust us type of thing, you know, just trust us.
Transparency.
Right, but we would never do that as a board, right? Of course. But you get different boards, people swap out. It's just I don't, I'm a little on the fence with it at this point. I don't know how much time it's going to save. I mean, we got six items. We're spending way more time discussing this right now, but I think it's important for long-term planning purposes.
Now, if you would like to table it, since it was your idea, it is your right to table.
I could, since it was.
You could make the motion and we would go with it.
Okay.
At least I would, I'm sorry. I concur. I'm fine with tabling it.
Do I have a further discussion on it? All right.
Which way do you want to go?
Well, let, let's table it if that's okay. With the board.
Are you, is this a motion? Motion it.
Yes, I'll make, does Nick have to make?
I was actually going to let the person who.
Right, by all means.
Fire away.
Um, I will make the motion to table the consent agenda for this evening.
Second.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes. All right. That being said, we got a lot on the agenda. Let's go. We're gonna have to move. Um, so uh, let's hop back into what I kind of wanted to start off with, because I think it's a really salient, important um topic here. Uh, is requesting a motion to approve resolution two zero two two dash zero four eight, recognizing the significant contributions of Mr. George Carpenter to the community's parks and green spaces. Uh, and, and George was just such a um driving force with the Parks and Greenspace Committee over uh many years, um, and, and really uh brought a lot of his skillset uh from, I think, the private sector at P and G. And kind of overlaid those in a township and provided a great deal of benefit um to, to everybody, really. And, and there's proof of it over at, at, at the park, which I think is one of the nicest parks around. There's our, our park across from our township. So we do have something that formally recognized George here this evening. And I'd like to read that. So um, resolution two zero two two dash four eight recognizes Mr. George Carpenter. Whereas Mr. George Carpenter was a longtime resident and supporter of Pierce Township, striving to improve the quality of life for all residents. And whereas Mr. George Carpenter donated valuable personal time facilitating the township's pursuit of benchmarking with other peer townships and strategic planning efforts. And whereas Mr. George Carpenter spent countless hours designing, building, and maintaining the trails. Being a key member of the Township's Green Space Parks Committee, fundraising, helping create Park Fest, spearheading the Park Master Plan, and volunteering for numerous other jobs to improve and promote the community we share. Whereas Mr. George Carpenter, George was a very active resident within Pierce Township. To honor all the work George did on behalf of the Township, trustees have dedicated two memorial plaques honoring his efforts. One each at the entrances to the Woodland Trail and the Historic Trail. Whereas on Sunday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two at two P M, the Pierce Township Trustees and Parks Committee dedicated two memorial trails to George, to Mr. George Carpenter. Now therefore, be it resolved that by virtue of his dedication and foresight, the Board of Trustees of Pierce Township hereby publicly recognize Mr. George Carpenter for his contributions to the citizens of Pierce Township, Claremont County, and our parks. That was very formal and, but I think well deserved.
Do we, we have his, members of his family are here today. Can we bring, can, can the family come forward, please? And uh, yeah, I think you should.
All right.
No, I think that since, you know, it turns out that I'm the old guy on the board. Um, you, you know, I got to tell you that your father was more than just parks and green space. He, he did a whole lot of things for this, for this township that I think really moved it forward. And I got a chance to work with him quite a bit, um, when we were, you know, doing the, the learning center and some other things in the, in the township. And um, I, I, I was terribly shocked when I heard the news. And beyond that, I was, I was saddened. I felt the loss. I'm sure yours was much greater than mine, but it was, you know, I, I lost a good friend and a, and a, and a guy that just was such a tremendous asset to all of us. So I, I feel so sorry for your loss. Um, he was a great man, a very great man.
He was.
And it's, Nick, do you want to take it from here? Why do you think I didn't go down there? I knew it was coming.
Thank you. What a great personality.
I didn't get to shake your hand. I apologize.
Thank you.
All right.
We need a motion.
Sort of a motion for approval?
All right, so moved. Second, sorry.
Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Cal.
Yes. All right, Chief Wright.
I have two minor corrections for this motion. So I request a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Brian Sims as a full-time firefighter paramedic at the established rate for the collective bargaining agreement step two, pending successful completion of Ohio Police and Fire Pension Physical Requirements, serving a one-year probationary period, noting that all associated expenses to be that of the township.
Did you say you had a couple of changes?
Yeah, instead of EMT, it should say paramedic, and after collective bargaining agreement, it should indicate step two, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
And Mr. Cal.
Yes, Service Director Kohler.
Oh, we got Brian.
Oh, yeah, we do have Brian here if we could swear him and.
Oh, yeah, quickly, sir, of course.
Come on down.
I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you what, Brian, this will be the worst five minutes of your entire life.
I'm feeling our, that was one hour of heat here.
Did you go with the long swearing in or the short? Can you do it in French today?
Service Director Kohler.
I request a motion to appoint Mr. Zachary Keating as maintenance worker two with the service department at the starting rate of twenty-four dollars per hour, per the proposed new pay plan.
Have a motion. So moved.
That's second.
Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
And Mr. Cal?
Yes.
And he is here too.
Yep.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
He doesn't have to, but you can go ahead and get your.
Get his picture taken with you.
Yeah.
What are we going to do with you?
I think we have a standard rate of what we pay for those things to, like, even if you have a really fancy mailbox, like caps added about twenty-five bucks or something. Is it a hundred dollars? Yeah. All right.
Welcome aboard.
All right, Chief Roxman.
Yes, so uh trustees, members of Pierce Township, I would like to introduce you to our newest officer, uh, Officer Chris Chesney. Uh, as you know, in the past couple of years, uh, law enforcement has been a rather difficult uh profession. Uh, across the nation, police officers are retiring in droves. So it's very hard to recruit uh new officers, not only nationally, but even in Pierce Township. We think we hit a home run with uh Chris Chesney. Uh, Chris has been uh a Redding Police Officer for the past seven years. Uh, prior to that, he was a auxiliary officer with uh Williamsburg for two years. He lives in New Richmond with his uh wife and two small children. And he's an avid outdoorsman and a uh avid hunter. So we are very pleased to have uh Chris come on board. Uh, he's going through a uh, a process right now with a coach, another officer that is breaking him in. And you'll see him around the area quite a bit. So please welcome Chris to our department.
Welcome, Chris.
Come on, man. You better just stay down there.
He was blazing out of here. He, he was almost at the door.
If everybody wants to know if you're related to Kenny. You do have the same haircut. You do have, you do have Debbie.
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
All right. Uh, presentation by Kramer and Associates of the Pierce Township Fire and EMS Study and Recommendations. Bill, would you like to come up? So if, if, if we could, we have a pact, so.
We'll try to make this quick. I appreciate being here. We do have a few slides to show you. They get it from Kohler, so. This, we'll go through this rather quickly. In light of the fact that the consent agenda actually delayed the meeting.
It did. It is kind of quite ironic.
I think it's a great idea in the long run though, so.
Thank you for your input. If you move outside the fire department on your suggestion.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Phil Graham, long time director. We're a fighter, also through the ranks. Our chief in a new technology called Europe. So I've got the real wins on experience, but the academic credentials, I was called upon, give a look make study of Pierce Township Fire Department. In short, it's a great fire department. Like Mr. Freeman would say, the best dang fire department in my county, and I think they lived up to that reputation. So let's take a look at some of these slides. We'll just keep it mincing pretty quickly.
Do you love to?
Oh, I, I get, well, that'll be quick, even quicker than.
I brought that pointer from town, but.
The, the one on the right, there we go. I did get great input. Uh, Ms. Rokee was in charge prior to Mr. Williams. Great support for the fire department, great creative, uh, forward-looking. Chief Wright gave me all the data we needed. We did some teleconference. We got good cooperation and your Pierce Township citizens, men who were here tonight are supportive of their department. They do appreciate the effort to improve. There's one common denominator. Everybody wants to seek quality fire protection and EMS service. We state, this is kind of a quick listing of some of the key things we found. I don't read those. I'll let you take a look. We, we are due for some renovations. Separate new station should be in the plan, but in the Amelia portion, we'll see some maps real quickly. If there was ever funding for a fourth station, it would get at the Hopper Hill. The two stations are serving the community fairly well. A new levy would permit a more solid staffing model. These are some of the strengths. Your recent insurance services office rating, which is what is used to break the insurance rate for it was improved indirectly. It also assists your homeowner rating. You've got quality apparatus, and there is an economy of scale, since you're also serving uh Ohio Township on a contract basis. Good community support, good good sport all around. There is a shrinking part-time firefighter base. Chief Rockström had mentioned the difficulties with finding the police officer. Volunteers, two hundred and eighty-six thousand volunteers in state and thirty thousand state or county place. Now, in the part time, it's very difficult. Honestly, most of my clients are switching all full-time, hard to see. And running it's more reliable service, and that's where you're headed. We did some uh hiring. Mike, Mike Nesterson, Deputy Chief, and Watkins, Assistant Chief, have added great strength to the command staff. Here are some areas needing attention. I do think that we could use additional on-duty staff in here as funding permits. The new station in the Amelia area should be on the planning board, and as we mentioned, a fourth station, perhaps something in Hopper Hill. Difficult to connect a hundred and seventy-page report, but the key issues are pretty much here. The fact that you actually look for outside input, I think is commendable. It's not going to be smarter than Chief Wright and your elected officials. Instead, I'm running a new third-party set, you know, pretty many best practices. Give you a good third-party unbiased overview. Regionalism is a benefit, and we're pretty much on top of that. Now, somebody, some, some people might say, are we, are we getting enough money from Ohio Township? When we said our forces into Jason's, you know, it's I'm getting nothing in return. But I think that's not the way to look at it when it comes to safety service. When I did a study up in Binance, Ohio, I liked what their township administrator said, Jeff Leonard. We have a sense of community here. I don't necessarily want to subsidize in our neighbors. We could take his statement and say, I would hope that if a Pierce Township resident is seriously injured outside township limits, I'd still want them to get quality care. So I, I do think I see that spirit, and it's just here at Pierce, but your neighbors. So I think that's very positive. Oops, sorry. Long button, it's good. It has to be afforded. It, if the fire department is overfunded and police protection is underfunded already, it actually can cause the lives of the fire department itself. Residents start counting in, businesses don't move into the township, and uh ultimately the fire department will fail. So I do think there's a good balance here from what I see in, in the township. There are some safety standards, and Chief Wright is well aware of the safety standards produced nationally. We're doing our best. Very few fire departments. When I was acting fire chief in the city of Cincinnati, I wanted to see how could we work in reading all the national standards. And it was difficult because sometimes the standards weren't proper, but they want. sometimes the standards weren't proper. They want seven people for a blast. They also want each truck to get their four minutes first arriving. Four minutes for calm and ready. Limited version, we had everybody's assignment. We can pick one or the other. We only put four people in each truck and we didn't get enough. Enough. We have to round out certain companies so we can get to everybody. So it's tough to meet these standards, but your fire officials here, your chief, your deputy chief, your assistant chief are well aware they are working to meet them as best they can. You come up with the best compromises. This is what it used to be. When it was a volunteer department, I'm old enough, I started as a volunteer many years ago, six people within fourteen minutes, eighty percent of the time. That's what at one time was considered still the standard for volunteer fire departments. Now today, much better, four people for a blast for four minutes, ninety percent of the time. And we're pretty good. Now the cost for for a new building might look expensive. Up to four million dollars for a basic fire station. It can go much higher if you want to add more space. But that's very inexpensive compared to the people on duty. If you're going to have four people on duty, you really need about sixteen. So it takes sixteen people. So your building might seem expensive, but it's really the people that have to be budgeted for the forty. Cause that's a million three for four people at the base. Okay, the response. The ISO and the NFA Insurance Services Office, National Fire Protection Association. Two of the big neutral third-party evaluators want somebody there in four minutes. And they want a whole complement within eight minutes. So what we've done with our map and took taking the median of four and they've got six-minute polygons. This is what we have now. The the black areas are the boundaries.
Can you go back to that? Can you go back to that real quick?
Sure. Those are the two, two stations we have with a six-minute polygon. You can see that there are areas outside of six-minute. All of the little fingers means that there's probably not as much population along those fingers. They can get almost to the edge of each territory within six minutes. The township does recognize the need for an additional station. It's at least on the, on the drawing board. It's on the radar at this point. There are three possible sites that might work. Adding that third station, as you can see, not only strengthens your ability to cover the whole area better, but there's a vertical at in the six-minute or the darker purple areas, you know. Here's another possibility, Jenny Lynn, not as good in coverage, but a little little better for certain portions of the township. And if you ever go to a fourth station, you can see what coverage would be like. Now, all of this is available in the report. We pull these maps available from my report. There's good apparatus. Additional equipment. There are some things could be considered. Dr. Pete, I know about the Lucas chest compressor. That, that has been very helpful, saves a lot of lives because doing maybe in manual depressions is kind of an exact science, keeping people alive. It'd be a good thing to have. I don't know if that's on the radar, but we've got a list of things like that that might enhance your department in the future.
Thought we already had one of those. Isn't that the striker thing? Don't worry about it. We have five of them? Okay, so we could scratch that off the list. I think we already have.
And you have a good rating. Your insurance rating. And I do think that you can even do better with that in the future, based on the improvements already being planned and already in place here. The nation's ISO distribution. You can see, this is a listing of all the fire departments, career and volunteer nationwide. And Pierce Township is right up there on that third column. You can see how close to the top. You can get better. Class one, two, and three. Great, you're three and. But I think you're getting, you're getting close to being a class three, which really moved you up. I looked at your extreme, some improvements we've already made. You can see how you compare to the nation's fire department.
And, and can you? Mr. Kramer, real quick, just, just to, I know you talked a little bit about it earlier. The ISO not only is a benefit to, you know, the department showing how well it responds, but could you tell the public how it also benefits them beyond just response times? The insurance issues there related to it.
Insurance Services Office. Now, if you're a, have a home within five miles of a fire station, you'd get a pretty good ratings. So the additional ratings beyond class five. Help primarily the businesses and the commercial residential, but it does, it's a matter of how we So indirect, very good point there. That's, that's, I think a statistic you really could hang your hat on. There's some community risk assessment we've done. You have just about all of these, which require special planning in advance, sometimes special equipment. And Pierce Township Fire has all of that. We talked about automatic vehicle locator. We don't see much of them each year. But one of my clients, New York, had a multimillion dollar ABL investment that was considered little value. That's something that could be considered. There are some costs involved in revenues. Debbie, make sure you don't spend your money unwisely. By the way, thank you for paying my fees and all many months ago.
That wasn't unwisely, was it?
Well, let's hope not. I have a bias there. I think it's my own spin. There's grants available. Again, Chief Wright and his group have already received grants from nice equipment because they're on top of that. These are a few of the things you could get. Budgets, funding. Just as a rule. This would be my quick summary. Number one on duty staff. In other words, before you build another station, make sure the ones you have ready. And we, we do go through a hundred and four hundred and some pages explaining these details. Then facility upgrades, replacements, finally apparatus replacements. I get this hurt sometimes when I see someone who's volunteered by They'd be much better advised to do what we're doing here. Concentrating on on duty staff. It'd be better, better sort of reduce service for fire growth. And you have people that were paid with that too. And I do think, as I said, you're in balance here in good city. The future. Many fire departments provide EMS. The on-duty personnel are far more likely to save lives with EMS than fire response. And there's an economy of scale there. Now, if I asked the audience, how many of you have had fire departments or five in your house? I see one hand. Hope they do well. How many of you have used the E M S? Lot more hands than one. So there is a good emphasis on EMS here and should be appreciated. So too. And by the way, thank you, Doctor, for all the good words you use with animals.
Okay.
We're, we're aware. I do a lot of the animal rescue. And any, any very, my work order is not already hit. Had oxygen masks for gas and dogs. I'm going to see if Frank's fire chief and baby's getting ready. He said, we get a lot more of the rest of the cat or dog than you're a person. He said, I think what I'm going to do is put a kitten in a cage, unintentionally. He was saying that tongue in cheek, of course. Okay, well, we're getting close to the end here. These are some of the futuristic enhancements. We mentioned the one thing, the Lucas device. There's other things that are coming today. So those were all in the report and it was a pleasure to work with the great people. I passed out my twenty-four hour phone number to all the trustees and administrator chief. I gave out souvenir pens to the audience. It might work. Took all that input. And I, everybody that called me got their two cents worth. So I'm, I'm still on a gratis basis. I'm here tonight on a gratis basis since Debbie paid my bill. And I still remain available. Record available. And they don't think we have time for a lot of questions, but if there's some, something, something I really must ask.
And what are your greatest presentation? I asked this question. In your report, are there projections from men, a fire? New one? Or in the dual of the exhibit, what are your projections, Eddie?
Well, we do have a lot of disparity lately. This is maybe we don't specifically know that.
Pretty significant. And what are you prepared? Whatever the next flipping. Something about, so that's why we asked if there's plenty of, you know, everything. And then it's not in the report that is exactly, it's not in the report that we all, we need all that.
Mark, as, as, as a separate matter, we've already started looking into that as well, using some of the recommendations of this report. Because it also, using that as a, as a guideline, we're able to look at what kind of capital equipment you're going to need to invest in. And that'll tell us how quickly the burn is on, no pun intended, of the, of our, our resources. So as we get that information more, you know, firm, then that'll tell us how, when we have to go out for that levy. My suspicion is, just to guess, probably in the next two years. But to, next to, somewhere in the next two years. Probably not next year, but maybe the year after. Perhaps. But again, we're waiting on, we're, we're trying to put together that capital. And Craig, if you want to jump in and correct me. But that's, that's kind of what we're trying to do. We're laying out the fiscal framework to determine. And then the issue of whether or not another, another building, you know, if there's, if there's resources or the ability to do another building and how that all kind of weighs into it. So there's still a lot of questions still yet to be answered on, on the financial side, which educates how fast the money's going to go. Or how much we'll have to ask for in a potential, in a potential levy.
And the strategy for which levies we potentially put on the ballot is, I mean, the police or the fire levy can't operate in a vacuum. And people are only willing to shell out so much extra tax dollars. And we may need a police levy at some point too. So I think we really need to be kind of mindful of like knitting that all together and from a strategic perspective as to what, what we ask folks to pay extra in taxes and where it's going to go.
Right.
So it's, I mean, I appreciate Mr. Kramer's, you know, input, of course, but we kind of got to consider all that as to what we put on the ballot.
But, but the, if, since, you know, you do roofs, I'll, I'll use a, I'll use a carpentry example.
Enlighten me, Alan.
You know, measure twice, cut once. So that's why we want to make sure that we know exactly what we're looking at before we start to move forward and ask the public to actually reach into their pockets. I mean, I think that's the responsible thing for us to do.
All right. Stan.
Mentioned a new building, okay?
A potential new building.
A potential new building and then to the middle. The last time I knew, maybe it was using contracted out their fire services to Union Town, which is why that building is too long. I'll be planning now that maybe it doesn't exist, we planning on stopping that and wanting to come out.
We currently do. We don't have a contract with Union Township other than our, our mutual aid pact with, with.
So, so that contract.
When Amelia went away, the contract.
And if you kind of like building their fire station. I'm going to use the TIF for Wally World.
Potentially, yes. It's, that's yet to be determined. So it's, it's all part of that discussion that we, we still have to have. We could use that in part, but that the language inside that TIF, we've talked about this before, is very specific. And so that firehouse would have to be somewhere very near Wally World, as you put it, Walmart. In order for us to use those, those funds. And I think that sitting inside that TIF account right now is somewhere around two million.
Yeah.
So firehouse would cost four. And then we still have the next question, which is even if we had the firehouse, how do we man it and how do we equip it? So those are still a lot of those questions that we still have to, we still have to sort through and we're not there yet. Correct.
All right. So thank you, Mr. Kramer. All right. We're going to have to keep moving. We've got a lot of people in here. Different issues. I don't want to bore everybody to death. So Chief Roxman.
Yes, sir. On last Friday, Chief Wright and I participated in Coffee with the Chiefs event at Big B Coffee on one twenty-five. It was a chance for residents to stop by. You know, talk with us about issues that they see in the township and get to know us a little better and for us to get to know you a little better. We had scattering of people coming into the coffee shop. And we had good dialogue with those individuals. And this is an event that we will periodically have to engage the public and, and have these conversations. So look for the next one. We will advertise it on the police Facebook page as well as the township's Facebook page. Okay? Any questions on that? Thank you.
Um, you, there's a, a line item here for Green Road as well as.
Yes. Yes. So between October seventeenth and twentieth, we had officers do speed enforcement on Green Road between four and five P M. During that time, a hundred and eleven vehicles were observed.
Well, excuse me, what was the timeframe again?
Between four and five P M. Each day on, between October seventeenth.
So a hundred and eleven vehicles in an hour? Is that what you're telling me?
Total for those four days.
Four days. Okay, four. I got it. So. Okay, that's still a lot of cars. Mess, that's, yeah, that's pretty, pretty brisk for Green Road.
Right. And so what we found was.
Thank you for the math, sir.
And you know, we, we get the part that they may have slowed down because our police vehicle was there, but we did enforcement. Sixty-eight percent of those vehicles were thirty miles per hour or under. Thirty-one percent of those vehicles were between thirty and forty miles per hour. And one vehicle was over forty miles per hour. So we did make some traffic stops at that time. We issued warnings for the speed. And again, this is something that we plan on doing from time to time because we get the fact that if we're there for four days, one week, and then go away for a while, the speed's going to increase again. So it's something that we're going to have to keep up on and we intend on doing so.
Thank you, Chief.
Well, there is one, I mean, getting back to Green Road just real quick, and I know, I know you're going to kill me if I go too long. Weren't we supposed to have a? Um, weren't we supposed to have a report today? On our agenda on Green Road and some recommendations from the, the engineer's office and our own?
There, there were no recommendations from Kleinger's. Uh, they did a speed study of that. I think that's ultimately what was directed and I hit the highlights of that at the last meeting, if you recall.
Oh, I, I was under the impression we were going to actually have some sort of options for people from Green Road to take a look at today.
That's not what was Kleinger's presented to us.
Okay. Again, I, I'm going to say it again. I thought we were supposed to have those today. Something for the folks in Green Road to chair, you got to ask the chair. Um, but I mean, I, so I'm a little disappointed it's not on the agenda tonight. You know, some, I mean, I, because you, you met with the engineer's office, the county engineer's office.
That's correct.
There were, it's my understanding that they were looking into some alternatives that we could present to the folks at Green Road specifically for them to take a look at tonight.
And, and Mr. Kohler, who was in that meeting with me as well as Chief Brockstrom, and probably recalls that the uh, most significant recommendation they made was to consider striping that road down the center. That, uh, that in a lot of times, a lot of cases can be successful in slowing speed.
Because, I mean, I, I think it's great that the police officers were over there and that they did, that they, they sat on the road, but once again, I feel like we're defining the hole. And we're not talking about how to fill the hole and, and get out of it. Um, so I apologize to the folks from Green Road that are here today. Chairman, this gentleman would speak. Yeah, I can't grant that. He'd yell at me if I said yes. Or hit me with the gavel. Or he'd hit me with the gavel.
Sorry. My name is Tom Figasi. I live on Vineyard Hills.
Yeah.
Uh, that would be the entrance I've talked before. Yeah. You're right, because when I was here, I missed last meeting, but the meeting before that, we were supposed to look at options as in the speed bumps, which uh, you obviously, we had talked about where we did all the rigorable, um, there are a lot of cars that come on that are shortcuts. And it whether it is Green Road, but it's also Vineyard Woods and Vineyard Hills that these people fly by where green is not that yeah, busy, I'm from occupancy, there, it is what, you know, Vineyard Hills and uh, Vineyard Woods both are heavily populated with kids, with dogs, with little ladies walking. There's no sidewalks, which is fine. And you're riding bikes and so forth, plus it goes down the hill. So I mean, there is a lot of speed and that's not, let's be, that's like, I mean, I see a police car, I'm going to slow that.
Sure.
You know, so, and everybody else will too.
Hmm.
I have people in a minute and, and neighborhood that are here that will absolutely swear that, I mean, they fly by. And if you, you know, yell to them or anything like that, they give you the number one sign.
Hmm.
Uh, so, um, it, it is a definite problem. Green was never made to be a shortcut for people. I, I know you all did, it had nothing to do with how that subdivision was made. But there are some definite, you know, definite things that can be used to help cut down on the traffic and the speed, uh, that we talked about, the, the speed bumps, the, again, whether they want, they also agree with me when we talked about the speed bumps, not the bumps per se, but the ones that can, uh, still have fire trucks and, and apparatus go through and not have to worry about the, the cars with their trucks. Doesn't what we're looking at. So I just wanted to kind of verify that you were ready.
Good, right. I do like to hear that.
Yes.
I know that, um, putting a stripe down the middle of a road that's too narrow anyway, when you've got pedestrians and you've got cars, and I'm thinking that a problem that could happen with that is you've got, you got a stripe down the middle and you've got a car coming one way, a car coming the other way, and there's not an inch for a pedestrian. And what worries me a little bit is that, you know, if you have some more of an aggressive or speedy driver, you know, what are the, what are we supposed to do, the walkers? I'm afraid, you know, some spaces are okay to, you know, go off in and there are other spaces that I don't want to get a tick on me, you know, on that golf course side. So I just wanted to add that as, I mean, I think that is.
I, I kind of thought the same thing. So like, do you think the stripe could make it worse?
I, I almost think it would make.
I almost think it would too. I mean, I know it's a recommendation of county and the county is brilliant beyond words. But that almost seems intuitively to me that that could make it worse. That it could make people feel boxed in on one side or the other. Um, and it could also give the perception of like a faster road. Like what, what types of roads do you see lines on, right?
Right.
Like thirty-five and over. So it could give the perception of a road that's busier.
Hmm.
And I, and I, I, I think that the business of this board should definitely not to be institute something that's going to make folks come back here and, um, you know, be weeks and.
I think one of us.
Thanks a lot, you made it worse.
Well, one of us, one of us has a doctrine that he has to live by and we should as well. And what is that, sir?
Say again.
What is the, what is the chief doctor?
Oh, obviously right, first to no harm, right?
That's right. And so I think that's something we have to make sure we don't make things worse.
But I appreciate your input for sure, because I, I kind of thought, I kind of thought the same thing, just intuitively, it seemed like.
But.
Didn't seem obvious that it was going to, you know, provide any kind of benefit.
But, and to it, I apologize because I thought, I, I told you the last meeting, we'd have things here and we didn't. So I apologize.
So for purposes of moving forward, maybe next month, Mr. Williams, is there a way we can get a recommendation? Uh, make that a priority to get a recommendation from Kleinger's, perhaps in consultation with, uh, our police and fire chiefs, Mr. Kohler, and have that, a list of dot, 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 these are the top three recommendations. And maybe we can discuss that in a little bit more detail.
Good, good. Can I make another potential recommendation that we workshop it? And we, and we have the engineer here, we bring some people from, from the community and sit down and just talk about what do you think about that? We, we, you and I talked about that before.
Yeah, I, I think there was just confusion with the engineers because if you remember, they started out with a fairly high price for full traffic analysis. And I think the trustees were a bit, um, concerned about that cost.
I understand.
And they scaled that back to what turned out to be basically a speed study on there without any recommendations.
So, sorry. As Chair, we're gonna have to move along. So what I would suggest is that we, I agree, Alan, we do a workshop, maybe with staff and one trustee to bring a few of these, uh, available options in front of some of the residents over there. And kind of like, you know, focus group them and make sure there are things that you, like the line striping, I mean, you know, we waste our time. We come here and then there, you know, something that you guys all think is a bad idea. So maybe we can throw a few of these ideas in front of a focus group, for lack of a better term, with our staff and possibly a trustee and get a feel on it.
Yeah.
I, I know that we're done and we can't talk anymore and that's fine. I appreciate it and I think, I think we could get, I think we could get some, some, uh, of our neighbors to come and be a part of that. But my one neighbor just told me that on Huntington Road and Huntington Avenue in Amelia has those speed cushions. I don't know, maybe talk to some people, maybe the fire chief and, and just see how that operates.
I think we probably have some recommendations from Kleinger's to some extent. And that it's just a matter of kind of bringing those forth. And I think we just haven't set a a set of, uh, you know, kind of a structured way to do that. And we've just been kind of well, we have tried to work through this, we, we have, and we've been letting folks talk and, you know, hearing your guys concerned and kind of working through this and weighing in against other areas of township that might be similar and to ensure that we're trying to, you know, doing a fair approach on, on all aspects of the township. But I do think it's a good idea.
We, we heard, um, at the Coffee with the Chiefs that there's a problem in Amelia um, with an access, an access point issue that will eventually, as those, as that particular neighborhood builds out, it's going to have the same, it's going to have a similar problem. So if we can figure out something here, hopefully it, it translates across the township. All right. So do you want me to work with the chief or with, uh, with Tim to set up a workshop?
Sure, do we need a motion?
You don't want that.
Sounds good to me.
Workshop.
We'll do a workshop. Let's just vet some of these ideas and get it so we don't.
Yep.
Before the next meeting. All right, Pond Run, update.
Uh, yes, sir. Just to give everyone an update about, uh, Pond Run. Uh, as you know, we had a number of residents come forth and, uh, state that there were issues related to quality of life, uh, occurring on Pond Run, particularly with a uh, resident at twenty-eight, twenty-five Pond Run. Uh, so last Friday I went to, uh, make a personal visit with that subject. Uh, we spoke for an hour and a half at his house. And he assured me that he is going to, uh, uh, work on um, kind of mitigating these, uh, quality of life issues. Number one, he stated he is not going to, uh, shoot anymore unless it's, uh, coyotes on his property. Um, he assured me that he's going to work with, uh, planning and zoning to work through some of the issues with uh, some of the construction going on in the property. And, um, I gave him my phone number, I got his number. Um, I think we had a good rapport going on. And I assured the residents that if they have future problems, uh, to give me a call and I will be the, uh, direct contact with this individual. I also spoke with an individual at twenty-eight, 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 twenty-eight A uh, over the phone. He, he too does shooting on his property. And he assured me that, um, he does no shooting uh, in the early morning hours or at the evening hours. He's respect, he tries to be respectful of his, uh, uh, neighbors. And he even tries to send out text messages to his neighbors to let them know when he is going to be doing some shooting. So I think it's good to have these, uh, direct lines of communication and, and keep the dialogue going to try to mitigate some of the problems going on on Pond Run. And I'm confident that, uh, we may be able to, um, improve the quality of life, uh, for residents on Pond Run.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Uh, do we have any Pond Run residents that, come on up, please?
Thanks. Thank you very much. Thanks for going out and speaking to me. Kind of using your Green Road analogy, you know, you said thirty-two percent of the people were actually going over the, the speed limit. If somebody were going fifty on that road, would you ticket them?
Uh, so the officer most likely would, yes.
Yeah. Exactly. And it doesn't matter what their name is or, or how long they've lived there, or even if they do live. It's a moving violation.
Correct.
And that's what we're looking at. We're looking at like equal opportunity. You know, that's all we want. We want a good neighbor is what we will do. Just to, to kind of review the whole situation real quick, this is going to be short. Um, in nineteen ninety-six is basically when this whole thing started. Uh, he was trespassing. We got a group of people together and put together a, uh, something that they could sign and we presented it to the people then. Um, since that time, he's he's built a building without a permit. He put up a deer stand without a permit. Um, he's built a barn, he's built a lake. Um, and up until this conversation, we've endured shooting all, all during the day and all the time. Um, off hours, I'll just leave it at that. I'm not going to say all things. Uh, but now he's actually, you know, building the residence back on, on his property, which I don't have a problem, but when I built our house, we had to get all kinds of permits and people to come in to to say, yes, that's good or no, that needs to be fixed. Um, I guess the whole point and everything that boils down to is a couple of questions. If there is equality under the law and under the permitting that goes on here, why should I have to get permits if he doesn't? I'm planning on building a barn. Should I just go ahead and throw it up and apologize later? You know, that's not how things are done and that's not what I would do. But it seems like that's the way that it's being handled at twenty-eight, twenty-five. The second question is, how much longer does this have to go on? It started in ninety-six. You know? So the tendency is after something goes on for a while, is to say, well, it's not as bad as what people are saying that it is. You want to minimize it to make it go away. But if he were living next to you, you would put a stop to it all. So all, all we're asking for is for somebody to stand up and keep standing up because that's the hard part. And say, this is how it has to be. So that's all I got.
So, so I have, I have a few questions, but not necessarily directed at you, but, um, Eddie, there, there were unpacking a few of the items in, in what the gentleman just said. As far as like the, the, some of those items predate you. But there are some items that need to be permitted. Are we talking about the county not taking action? Or is there something that we're not doing on, at, at this, at this office? That needs to be done.
Yeah, I, I believe there's an issue with, with anyone not taking action. I think it's a lot of the show doing activities as it's split and the community just suffering that, you know, overnight there's a new charge that's just mass, for instance. And so we've been working with the county building department regarding the driveway that really just kind of appeared, uh, no one was aware, aware or why. It occurred that way, but, um, it turned out that they're trying to be built and, and so we're working with building department who, uh, they're going out, we've also had a number of, uh, police department personnel, well, don't need to see that. Go out, they tend to work with the gentleman or get a problem, permitting change of place and determine the exact scope of what is that actually. So we had mediation last Tuesday where we, and we did discuss a number of these items. Some of them resolve. They'll have to be monitored as ongoing, as going concern, particularly in the short term, rather than say months past. But the both of our buildings, uh, would have to be permitted. We're working with, we're just, we didn't, you know, to get the property.
So what, what is that process after the fact? So like he's saying, you, you ask for forgiveness instead of permission, just build it. I mean, so what, where, how does this like work practically speaking? You're going to have to like talk, talk down to me a little bit too, because I don't.
So if you're really intent on, I'm struck with being struck, so there are well over ten acres of them there. So theoretically, depending on the use, it can affect the property, you know, whether it's that or also structural, whether it's well. It is well, I do it after there's no permit, it's a no permit, it needs to be helped by regulations and so on and so. So no one will be permitted occupy that. So until all those.
Right, but, so he's just blown by that, he's ignoring all that, he's building whatever he wants, smiling, I can do whatever I want. And, and so at the end of the day, if he's built something that's not permitted to be, because I remember having a discussion with you a long time ago. You couldn't go into your own home until you had the apron put at the end of the driveway. And this guy's doing a whole lot more than just an apron at the end of his driveway.
There's no way.
Yeah, he's, he doesn't care and he's not, not meaning this. I mean, you, you had a mediation. And don't think he cares about the mediation results because he's already got what he wants. I mean, what is the recourse for this township where the neighbors? I mean, go ahead and build your building, get back yourself out because I mean, your next door neighbor doesn't bother. So what is the, what is the, what is the stick here?
We had to work with legal counsel, you know, we treat, so we screen any, anyone who's allegedly in violation of our building regulation, we have a safe process for everyone to cross.
Yeah.
So that process, they'll take them to the rock, your dog. Benefit of the doubt, say, hey, let's work through these issues. Well, the way that this problem is the part, I know it's, knows the pride for the neighbors. We took this on the two meetings and rocking your dogs for, I believe it was four or five different issues. Well, in that time, two more issues popped up that were not addressed. They actually commenced together, who aren't, who aren't aware that they were even an issue at that time. So we'll continue to take them to this process. However, in the event that mediation does not come to fruition, it doesn't produce any sort of uh, qualified result, we'll have a little legal counsel where we determine the proper legal rounding channel where we go in order to take care of this.
And so.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So thank you, Eddie, for that information. I'm a little bit more, I wanted to let the other two trustee, I'm a little bit more familiar with this because I live right down the street from this fellow as well. Um, so I'm a little bit more familiar with some of these details, not of the nineteen ninety-six information until this.
So I'm a little bit more familiar with some of these details, not of the nineteen ninety six information until this past weekend. That was well before my time there. Um and Eddie, as you and I discussed, I think part of the problem here is with this individual is a repeated pattern over decades, not six months, twelve months. A repeated pa- pattern of uh ignorance of the law or a demonstration that he is clearly above the law. Uh whereas everyone else in the township is responsible for responding to and adhering to the law. So you know, the the regretful thing about this is, and I I appreciate uh chief meeting with Mr. Wiggins. I think that was a positive step. If we can solve these types of disagreements on a diplomatic basis, I'm all for it. Um I'm not optimistic, however, based on, you know, it it been there, done that, you know. The the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior, you know, in my experience as a medical doctor, you know, in seeing scores of patients over thirty years. Um and and quite truthfully, it's proven itself over and over again. So while I appreciate the effort, I think it was spot on and I I do think that it was worth having that discussion. My impression is that unless we take the um. The highest level of permissible legal action is that this will not stop. Um and it will not be uh unfortunately something that the neighbors are going to put up with. And we will be held responsible as as a board of trustees for setting perhaps a a negative precedent. Because if the word gets out in the community that we're letting this guy over a period of twenty and thirty years get away with this stuff. Then who's to say that, you know, they can't do that, you know, on Country Club Drive or on seven forty nine or whatever. So.
Hey, that's where I live.
I I realize and you don't want this next to you. I I'm sure, but you know, so there is the issue of precedence. Or on Country, right. I chose my words pretty carefully.
I think you picked on strategic.
I did. So, you know, bottom line, in my opinion, you know, we do want to try and work with this guy and and be amicable and diplomatic. I don't think it's going to work and I don't think the behavior is going to stop unless we draw the line in the sand legally. You know, that this will stop. And by the way, these are the penalties and we are going to see that they are enforced. So empty words, in my opinion, have no place in this discussion. I think we are obligated to act. And again, I bring up the issue of precedence. Because if we don't act in this situation. I think the word's going to get out and we're going to be identified as being very lackadaisical in terms of how we enforce our regulations. And what's the purpose of having regulations if we're not going to enforce them?
We don't want, we don't want anything. We don't want him to be put in front of a fire. We don't want any damage or or anything done to his property. We want him to be held at the same level that we are.
Yeah, so so I I I really come down on on your, I I think your logic is very spot on in the sense that, you know, why have rules if they're not going to be enforced?
Right.
And I think as as a board, like, we can't undo anything that's been done in the past. But we can ensure that rules get applied evenly and are enforced evenly. And I think we really need to kind of parse this out as to what rules are being violated and how it's going to be approached. It can't be, I mean, no offense. I know a lot of you guys are worked up about this, but it can't just be, you know, let's all get our pitchforks and torches and go. You know, go get this guy, right? I mean, we need to have reasons to to as as far as what we're gonna kind of, how we're going to approach this. And I think the zoning thing would be an example I could bring up immediately. And I think that um. If if I'm building a shed out back of my house and I forget to ask for a permit or I'm I'm not, you know, and I'm I don't understand that a permit is needed and I build the shed. Is Pierce Township going to come bulldoze my shed tomorrow because I built it and I didn't know? Of course not. But if I show a pattern, right, if I build a shed, I build another structure, I build a driveway and I do all these things and I have A, B, C, D going on. And I haven't asked for permits for any of it. I'm showing a pattern of just disregard and a clear acknowledgement essentially in that that I don't really, you know, want to play by the rules. So I I think like um in this case, that's probably being established and I don't see it as necessarily unfair to come. And and really look at this a little harder than we might look at somebody that just accidentally built a shed and forgot to ask for a permit. So. Get like as a township, can we lean this property?
Well, it's going to depend on a lot of factors. I mean, as Eddie said, there are so many nuances with respect to zoning if it's agricultural. I mean, I'm not a lawyer with intricacies of this property on its own, how it's owned and what the done permitting hold on stuff. But you you could, under certain scenarios, get leaned in the property. You may not be almost being billed and how it comes to be done. So that's going to depend on a lot of.
But if a person has built a structure and he's been made aware of it and that he doesn't have a permit to occupy. But he's occupying. Do we not have the ability to find that person for having done that?
Sure. About your zoning resolution, I believe you can do that. And um you know, then he said if you had C U V status or some other thing that that may impact that, but there. There should be ways to.
So what I would like to recommend, Eddie, if you think this is appropriate, Tim, if you if you think this is appropriate and and of course. Our legal counsel. Could you work together to lay out and obviously work out with the chiefs? Dig in on this, do some legal research and come up with a a a very quick strategy for us to. I don't want to put him in front of a firing squad, but I do. I do want to get some. I want I want I want to get his attention. Um and you know. I really did a double take when you said nineteen ninety six. I mean, that's an embarrassment to the township that this has been going on that long. And we're maybe going to get me, you know, mediation, maybe it'll work out, maybe. No, I think we need to start. We need to start throwing some vests. So i- if you guys are okay, perhaps maybe make a motion to that effect.
Okay, and I agree with trustee Kelly. I don't want to, you know, chase this guy down with pitchforks. We do not want to bully this man.
No.
You know, that is not appropriate under any conceivable circumstance, but there's a pattern here. It's consistent and it will continue. Unless we follow the letter of the law and and really, you know, get this taken care of to where it just it just stops. And if there's anything there that's been done that's not permitted, that is not standing, you know, according to our regulations, rules and so forth. Then if there's the possibility that we can order it to be torn down, I suggest we do so. Um so you know, wha- whatever's legal, nothing illegal, nothing uh rude, nothing like Nick said. But you know, whatever's legal, I think we should push it as far as we are allowed to push it because this is not going to stop.
I agree with you on all of that except for one thing. I don't mind being rude.
Well, you know, I want to be this guy's neighbor and I want this guy to.
Well, yeah, you've got a little bit different situation than I do.
Right, you know.
So there's kind of a, there's a legal element, but I would also like Eddie, if we can. To kind of um lay out the facts and ensure that, you know, th- this is a. A salient, a situation that's abnormal and different uh as far as the pattern. Uh from a zoning perspective and other things that we typically dealt with in the township. And if there are other patterns like this in a township that you're aware of, I would like you to let the board know. And we can address those in a in a similar way. So I just want, I want to make sure that we're applying and I I have never been uh in the camp. That we're going to let things slide from a zoning perspective as a board. I and I could care less how long you've lived in the township or.
Yeah, this has gone on for.
Yeah, I don't.
The area that's so unique is he's been checking our ass since nineteen ninety six.
Yeah, so I mean, I I don't think that we've ever been in that camp, but I think this needs to be looked at closer. And I also think it needs to be objective. Where we kind of lay out, you know, the pattern and ensure that, you know, we're dealing with this appropriately and that there's. If there's another pattern similar to this anywhere else in township that you're aware of, I would ask you that you let us know. And uh and we address these issues and get on a pattern as a board and as a township. That's can a consistent application of our of our zoning requirements and rules and not just and, you know. Um kind of, we're we're going to deal with things when they pop up and fires when they start. I mean, I think we should have a consistent application of the rules across the township. I think that's important. This could be a good up learning opportunity for us to open our eyes and ensure that we're applying things consistently.
And again, thank you for speaking with me uh and and starting the dialogue. Because I mean, it it has to be done. And to to go back to my original. Kind of cute question to you. The reason that you you do cite people for speeding is not because you don't like it. It's safety and order.
Right.
So, you know, again, that's all we're, that's all we're looking.
And and sir, in my email, I to the residents uh that I responded to, I. I said, I understand uh the fact that you guys are skeptical because you have dealt with this problem for so long. I'm only going, you know, the a lot, all this predated me. And so I'm coming into it with kind of a uh diplomatic uh means to try to resolve things peaceful peacefully. But I understand that um this is a longstanding problem.
I don't mind if.
So two things, chief has made his himself available for any public safety concerns. Is that correct, chief?
Yes.
To respond any said it.
Yes.
So if you see, you know, if there are any safety concerns such as shooting across the roadway or shooting onto your property. Or let's say shooting off hours at 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 midnight like he's been doing, then, you know, chief would like to hear about that. He'd like to hear about it directly. From the individual who is who has heard it the firsthand, in other words. Uh I think that that would be helpful to keep that information on file.
Right.
And and track it. Uh second, I am willing to make a motion. I think that was a good idea, Mr. Freeman. So. I'm going to ask our legal counsel to perhaps guide me in how to, what kind of a motion to make that would frame our path forward. In 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 terms of pursuing this along legal uh routes.
Well, I mean, if you want to just move to investigate or the possibility of pursuing legal remedies against property, I think you could bring your motion that way.
I just can leave it open ended that way.
Yeah, because I mean, we're not going to take any action other than to just look at what what's going on.
What our options are.
Yeah.
Okay, so um thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you very much.
I'm new to this and uh new to the township too.
We'll go easy on you.
Yeah. Um just moved out here from Anderson Township. And I was very familiar with one of these that went on down there on Mount Carmel Road. Um and they ultimately did bulldoze um and they danced around for way too long. But it was curious when he said nineteen ninety six and um I looked up on the auditor's website. And the property was sold in ninety one, in twenty thirteen and twenty twenty. And Mr. Wiggins has only had it since twenty twenty, according to the auditor's office.
And there's there's more to that story.
Yeah, I'm sure. Oh, I'm sure. There, yeah.
A lot.
Yeah, yeah. But you know, that's just what, you know, it's one of those things that I do at at work and so I kind of keep handy with this. But um as a. Somebody who and I'm also an electrical inspector for the state of Ohio and um. You've got some building issues that do pertain to buildings and some that pertain to agricultural. But um I'd be glad to offer just a bit of guidance there if uh at some point in time.
Thank you. What was your name, sir?
Tim Curry.
Okay. Oh, Curry Electric. Okay, I saw that. I've heard your ads. Um so uh Ms. Barbier, uh could, once again, could you remind me? I want to make sure I say the right things.
And by the way, Pete, on seven forty nine, I'm that neighbor. So is that you? Yeah, I'm I'm the menace of the street. So. That was a bad example.
Well, you may you may appear before the board at one point or another.
You don't know who the menace is. It's you.
That's right.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Twenty eight twenty eight pond run road before twenty eight twenty five.
Across the street.
Yes.
He's just trying to make friends. He's here from Anderson and he's just doing all he can to fit this.
Networking.
I would like to also comment that it's a health hazard what he's doing. When he did own twenty eight twenty eight, he put a an apartment above the garage and had a pipe on the apartment. Meeting down into the creek for his waste. And I know I paid thirty five thousand dollars for a septic system at my house.
Right.
I don't think he, I I don't know, but I would wager to guess he does not have it. The new construction, any kind of a septic system put in. And I would like that to be just something that needs to be looked into.
Has the health department looked at this at all? Have they have they wandered by during this? Because they are top notch too.
The this particular time, it's the first that a new one that I have not heard before. It's part of the house or the structure that he built at the top of the hill at the end of the driveway. Uh so we were working with the department to get that sort of problem. So they would they would not be able to occupy once they have. For disposable places.
Is he aware of that right now?
He needed government and then he needed government and then. Forever building. We have not heard from him, but uh that was when I last we can get about seven minutes.
Okay.
All right, so let's see if we can get some teeth on this in the form of a resolution.
So so I'd like to make a motions. I am in the interest of moving forward. Thank you for everyone. Um I'd like to move to open an investigation. And consider the possibility of pursuing legal action. Into building activity. Occurring on property located at twenty eight twenty five Pond Run Road.
Okay, so I I will stick with that. I would like to add a little bit into that, though, is open an investigation based on our zoning administrator's recommendations. Because I would like it to to ensure that this pattern, I just would like that pattern established. It sounds like it's there. I don't think that's going to be a problem. But I would like that documented as a as a as a way to buttress this and 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 solidify it that we're moving in a way that's consistent with our rules and regulations. So I would just like uh.
Friendly amendment. I'm open to a friendly amendment. I just want to make sure we get this right, you know, so that we, moving forward, we've dotted our i's. And we've crossed our t's because we have to do that with this fellow.
So I I would, I I guess I'll make the motion, Pete. Sorry.
Okay.
You want to amend it again, you can. You're bullying a bank.
Not only was it a friendly amendment.
I would like to make a motion to move uh to open an investigation and consider possibly. Uh pursuing legal action based on the recommendations of uh. Based on the recommendations of our zoning administrator. Um into building activity occurring uh on property located at twenty eight twenty five Pond Run Road. Super sloppy. I can give this to you. But I just want that like let that based on recommendations from our zoning administrator because I want the rules to be consistently applied. So I want that established, that that pattern established in some way.
And I'll second the chairman's motion.
Okay. No need for Alan. I have a motion.
Come on, troublemaker.
Yes.
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 All right. Thank you for your input. Appreciate that. Okay, um. Firing EMS, Craig.
So I believe you're aware, we recently had a fire at thirty six zero three Turnberry, um just um week, week and a half ago. Came in about two o'clock in the morning when crews first arrived on scene. The fire was already through the attic. Uh the house is unoccupied, was currently for sale, so it's under investigation. We have worked with zoning uh the night of the fire. We did have the structure secured so that it will prevent any access to it. Uh Halloween, this one kind of goes along with police department. Uh so every year. We send crews out, as do the police officers, to to move to different portions of the township, pass out candy. Sit with our vehicles on, you know, at at areas with lights on to help slow down cars, traffic, keep everyone safe. So we did. It was very successful this year and we've already started working on Mr. Kohler to try to get the service department on board for next year.
Great. That's sideways well and the service director call.
I don't think you want to do that because his crew is really scary. A little too much for Halloween.
I do have two other quick things. Um so recently, Kevin Barkley, one of our firefighter M Ts. Uh just graduated from paramedic school, passed all the the testing to become licensed in Ohio, which is a huge feat. It's a long, year-long intense program. So we're very proud to have another new medic on board. Along with, I think I mentioned last month, or maybe the one for Jared Brewer also recently completed. So it's pushing us um forward. The last brief thing I have is um open burning. So since we're in the Division of Forestry region, um October, November, two of the months out of, I think, six. Where there's no open burning permitted from six AM to six PM. Um we had a fire earlier today off Cole Road from somebody that was burning some leaves. The guy out of control and uh burned about an acre of of property. I don't know if anybody's seen the news, but um out by Shawnee Forest in Adams County is. I think there are several hundred acres that are on fire. There's climate county departments had to go out there to assist them last night. So I know it's difficult. So I know it's difficult. People have leaves, people have trees that are down and, but it's extremely dry. We've received little to no precipitation, so it's a huge hazard right now to, uh, to burn anything. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief Wright. Service Director Kohler.
Well, we've been taking advantage of Coal Road being closed, um, due to other things, so we, my guys, well, a couple of them, they made this little contraption to go on the front of the mini excavator to help us, um, be more efficient about maybe widening some roads um, to help make them a little safer. So we tried it out while Coal Road was closed out, closed down. We tried it up, tried it out going up Coal Road Hill and worked really well. So we, we did it all the way up till you got to the top of the hill, which was a, a known trouble spot for cars getting off the edge of the road. Um, especially trailers. So that road is now about three foot wider in that spot from basically Lewis Road on Coal Road all the way up to the top of the hill. Um, we've had multiple bus drivers stop and just thank us. Um, because they have very hard time navigating through there. So, um, it was, you know, greatly received by a lot of residents also. Um, we'll eventually get back on Coal Road and, and do some more, maybe next year. Um, we've got, you know, money, we've got to watch and all that stuff, but it's worked really well. And then they did open Coal Road this evening. So, um, down at the bottom where they did the pier and plug, it is done and open for business.
Yeah, I, I heard that reverberating across Facebook. Coal's open, so they're, they're, the community seems thrilled, so. I haven't taken it yet, but I will.
Thanks, John. Uh, Parks and Green Space Committee. Do you have any parks and green spaces?
Annual Amelia Christmas Parade is scheduled for the twelfth, uh, this year of December. Starts at two PM, um, usually runs for about an hour or so. Um, and, uh, uh, Chief Wright, you may have to help me on the starting point and ending point on that, since this will be my first, uh, of the Christmas parades, but that's when it's scheduled. Yeah, I think that they had mentioned the same as the prior year, but I'm just not sure what that route was. That's all I had on Parks and Green Space.
All right, thanks, Tim. Eddie.
Uh, so last month, uh, kind of stayed steady with permits. We had thirty overall and five new homes. They were all in the, uh, former Amelia Village area. So, uh, things are still moving along there. Um, let's see, they're, uh, closed out, closed five code cases and, uh, or sorry, closed seven code cases and opened, uh, five additional over the month. And the other items that I have, I have the Pond Run, which I think we, we thoroughly covered, have some action on that. So we'll be moving forward on that over the next, over the coming weeks here. Uh, thirty-seven seventy-five Vineyard was a property that was, uh, declared a nuisance property. At one point, we cut the grass, declared another, a second nuisance on that particular property due to the, uh, pool not being secured and, but secured by a fence. So we had a contractor go out after notifying the owner, and we put a fence around the portions of the property that were not properly secured. So that was done um, that earlier this week as well. So, so we documented that. We'll put a lien on the property for the amount of, uh, the contract. And the last item I have is for nine sixty-two East Legendary Run. So as you know, that was another nuisance property where we declared a nuisance due to the fact that the structure was unsecured. We put a fence along the portions of the structure that were unsecured at the time and took care of that. That was, uh, that fence will be in place until December. However, over the past couple of weeks, as the owner has been doing work on the property, uh, various portions of the structure have, have become unsecured. The fence has been left open. The back of the home uh, was not properly boarded and so forth. So it's, there was a potential for unauthorized access to that structure. So we worked with, uh, Chief Wright in order to further investigate this, this property. And Chief Wright, um, in our office have provided, uh, an option for, uh, moving forward with the nuisance five oh five eight six. So Chief Wright has confirmed that uh, unauthorized access still appears to be possible entering through the back of the home, that sort of thing. So um, in your packets, you have a resolution which is twenty twenty-two oh five one, which would be to, which would declare a nuisance under five oh five eight six. Staff will go out, notify the owner of the potential issue. If it is not taken care of, we would go forward and secure the structure ourselves, whether that means fencing portions that are unfenced, locking the fence, or boarding up portions of the structure in order to make it fully secure. So that's, that's recommended action number one. The second item is that we've received complaints that the structure just remains a nuisance due to the fact that construction is either moving too slowly or not moving forward at all. There remain to be, there, there are still deficiencies in the structure as far as scarring from the, from the smoke that's still, that is still in place. Uh, broken windows on site. There's no garage door, for instance. Just, those are just a couple of the items that just remain as, as we approach winter. So staff worked with legal counsel to determine a path forward on that particular item as well. And through the ORC, there's, uh, thirty-seven sixty-seven dot four one, which is a building's found to be public nuisance. And so if this board so determines that it's appropriate, uh, we can work with legal counsel to move forward using that particular statute, which is, basically, um, we would work to obtain an injunction, I believe, is the, the actual proper path that we would take. But Attorney Barbier can provide a little bit more of a succinct explanation as far as what the actions would be on that if we decide to take that path.
So you, you have the option to file injunction and eventually, ultimately what your, you know, your motion for injunction will say is that the building is a nuisance and it's a menace to the health and safety and welfare of the, you know, residents of Pierce Township. The judge would set an evidentiary hearing. Um, I think that's typically within twenty, thirty days after you file your injunction, after you get service of your injunction on the property owner. And you have to put on evidence that is a public nuisance. We probably would have to have testimony. You know, you would have, they would have a hearing. If the court declares it and finds it is a public nuisance, the court will order the property owner to remedy the nuisance. And if the property owner has, doesn't have the means or the motivation to do so, then the court can actually put the property in receivership and have a receiver then conduct the work to remedy the nuisance itself. Um, the township wouldn't be responsible for paying the receivership or for that work if the injunction is actually granted. So that would be kind of the process by which you would do that. Um, the court would, uh, likely give the property owner some time to remedy the nuisance if, you know, um, through the process of the injunction, but it would be a path forward through the court system against the property researchers.
And, and we'll be reimbursed for all of our expenses to date in, in this process, I assume, including legal fees, perhaps.
It's going to depend on.
Can't, who he's bought out of a turn on.
Well, right. But we're going to, we could try, right? We could ask for legal fees.
Lean would, would provide that. But let's just assume the worst. The guy that owns it just files bankruptcy and walks away. You're, you're left holding the bag. I mean, I guess the only thing that maybe we could do is take the property. But at, at that point, we may not be the only lien holder. We may be in line.
And I mean, there's also, you know, the options. The court doesn't find the vehicle a nuisance and then, you know, you got nothing.
Right, but legal fees.
I think he's been given ample opportunity. I would be all for just doing nuisance personally. I mean, I think we've been around this.
Just, just doing the nuisance or doing both?
Uh, I'd say doing both, consistent with what we talked about, about Pond Run. I think we got to draw the line. This guy's appeared before us. He, uh, a few months back and he promised he was going to make it right. And here we are several months later, not, and it's not right. So consistent with what we talked about earlier, I think we have to pursue all legal remedies to close this case as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and I assume you have photos of the fencing and things that, that he is, you know, I'm assuming he's been in and out of that, hasn't locked it back up and stuff, right? I mean, how else is it?
Yeah, so we, we have gone out and confirmed. We were in, so we work with the fire department closely in order to make these confirmations and to provide you the documentation that it was in fact at that point in time unsecured. Now, person could be watching this meeting right now and run out to the site and we do. We take photos of all of these different items. So any accusation or allegation that we bring upon someone, we send a letter and we include a photo with that letter indicating exactly what it is that could be in question, we'll say. We confirm that. And so, uh, at this present moment, there is a lock on the fence. You can see that from the road. There wasn't a lock on the fence when we brought, when we sent them a letter the first time and when we went to investigate to confirm that it had not, that they had received the letter and had not actually done anything. Now, the back of the structure, we're unsure if it's, um, actually properly secured or not. I've not had access to the backyard. However, the fence to the backyard in two places remains broke. If that's any indication.
Well, the second. And originally, the, the fencing was more around the perimeter. And now it looks like it's just around the garage.
Right, and, and you're. Let's remind ourselves that this is fencing that we required as a board essentially to put up. And this place caught fire how long ago?
Yeah, it was September.
September of twenty-one.
Yeah.
Well, but as, but aside from, from that, we're over at this original discussion that the gentleman was here. How long ago? Six months?
That's what I mean. And so, and so it's fenced off and, 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 uh, you know, an attempt to keep it safe because it's not being demoed and, and reconstructed in a timely way. I mean, it's, I mean, I understand that, you know, that the construction and contractors and everybody can take a while, but we're over a year now.
And the one thing too was, so with five oh five eight six, so there, there's the nuisance to five oh five eight six, and then there's a nuisance to thirty-seven sixty-seven. With the first one regarding the site just not being secured. The risk associated with that is basically, if you were to declare that a nuisance based on the information that you have right now, we would then notify the owner and let them know this appears to be a problem. After that clock runs out, the statutory clock will say, we go out and investigate and determine, okay, have they fixed it? Since, you know, they either contact, sometimes they could contact us. They don't, we would go out and determine if it's still an issue. If they've actually secured it in that time, there would be no action to take. So there would be no lien or anything theoretic. We have to give them notice after you declare a nuisance. And so they have the opportunity to actually take care of it. Now, if we went back out after the notice period ends and it's clear that you could walk right into the back of the house, for instance, into the middle of the construction zone, then we would take action to actually secure the structure. So the risk associated with that, with the, the actual securing of it is not an immense risk, we'll say.
What's the other option?
So the other option is, well, it's not option. It's the, the second step of recommended actions is the thirty-seven sixty-seven, which Attorney Barbara was discussing about that the actual structure itself being a nuisance.
But it, but it has, they can, they can, they, they have to not act upon what we're requesting in the first, in step one.
It's like a, it's actually two separate, they're two separate items. So the five oh five eight six is, is, um, an ORC statute that basically is, you know, if the structure's unsecured, um, they're both nuisance statutes, but that one will allow us to go ahead and just secure the structure. Now, the fact that there are other issues where they're working but might be working too slowly, or they're not fixing it to a, to an adequate degree and it remains in disrepair or a nuisance generally, we would have to take action under thirty-seven sixty-seven, which is the second, the second nuisance component. So they, they, these are very strictly construed ORC statutes, and that, that's kind of where, you know, the township has to kind of navigate on very specific grounds through each.
All right, can we do both of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Grab them, uh, grab these written down or what do I say? They're somewhere in here.
They're somewhere in here. I'll make the motion that we adopt the resolutions that you prepared, Eddie. Um, both of them actually. Or do they have to be two separate motions?
I would do two separate.
Two separate motions, okay. Let me get the numbers right, Dan.
Eddie, do you have this? I mean, I, because I'm not finding it.
Yeah. Oh, that's from your email.
Yes, number one would be a resolution approving. And then item number two is just, if you just read two, it's just a motion.
Okay, so two separate motions.
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, I motion that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero five one. A resolution approving the removal, repair or securance of blighted, insecure, unsafe or structurally defective structures located at nine sixty-two Legendary Run.
I have a motion. Second. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And I'd like to make a second motion that we proceed with initiating a nuisance action in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, section three seven six seven dot four one, buildings found to be a public nuisance.
Motion. Second, second. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
This is good news for the township. We have to crack down on this, this ridiculousness.
However, I do feel a little embarrassed that this one started thirteen months ago. That one started in nineteen ninety-six, so. I had to point that out. Sorry.
But we are moving forward. We're taking action.
Okay. All right. Tim Williams.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything else.
Right. Old business? Nothing? New business? We can just go ahead on the consent agenda. Oh, that's right.
You shut that down.
Debbie.
Still moved.
Second.
All right, Debbie. Now, roll call.
Uh, Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Yes. I'm moved. Second, roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Abby.
Request a motion for approval of the payment of seven thousand one hundred dollars from the Ohio Order of State for the retired state audit with the period of.
Do we really need to do that? Geez.
You have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, Chief Wright. Of course.
Always, always.
Of course.
Um, it's the renewal of the, uh, Cloud Coalition, um, Urban for two hundred dollars.
Coalition of large urban townships. We've been a member since, what, twenty fifteen?
That's just an annual fee, membership fee.
Yeah.
Okay, I make the motion.
Second, roll call.
Uh, Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
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 Chief Wright. I request a motion to accept the resignations of full-time firefighter, paramedic Sam Sneed effective October seventeen, two thousand twenty-two, and part-time firefighter, paramedic. And part-time firefighter paramedic Desiree Moore Murphy effective October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sir, straight to caller.
I request a motion to approve a purchase order to Smith Trailers and Equipment for the purchase of an equipment trailer in the amount of seven thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars. A summary of the quotes for the trailer are attached with the agenda packet.
What's it for, John?
Obviously transporting our equipment around the township.
Move it from one side.
Wow, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I really appreciate it. It's, it all makes sense now. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So you second.
For dividing this between Fars and Roadbridge.
Okay.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
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 You did get that Nick was the, the second on that. I didn't think she caught that.
All right. Eddie.
Planning and zoning administrator Eddie McCarthy requests a motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Kristi Cannon as a part-time planning and zoning assistant effective ten thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two.
So she, didn't she leave like two, three months ago?
She, she, she remained basically on the roster because she was helping with some land use plan stuff. But she didn't end up really working many hours whatsoever, but was there on standby in the event that.
So she remained on the practice squad?
That's right.
So, yeah. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right, other agenda items. Administrator Williams?
Yes, if I could ask that the board would table item number one, which is the motion for revising our personnel policies procedures, since that's gonna need some more work.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion for that. Just table it. And move on. I don't, Tim, we don't need a motion for that.
Just ta, I was asking if you could table that at this point.
Do you, do you want us to do a motion?
That's entirely up to the chairman.
All right, so moved.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, minis, yes, Administrator Williams.
Yes, Administrator Williams requests a motion for the board of trustees to adopt the Pierce Township Board Goals and Objectives for the years twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. The board will review the goals and objectives at six-month intervals and consider amendments as necessary within the first year of adoption. Just a little explanation for those that are in the audience. The board went through a rather sustained goals and objective process, starting in August, I guess, when we did tours of all the facilities. As the chairman or Mr. Freeman alluded to before, we looked very closely at facilities and the condition of those facilities and where we're going to, what we're gonna need to do going forward. That was part of it. We also looked at properties that we own, including those that we inherited from Amelia Village as part of that tour. Then we went on a, a rather intense goal-setting two-night process where the trustees looked at a lot of the projects that are gonna be important to us for the next couple of years, including facilities, but other things as well. And came up with an action plan, and that's the goals and objectives that we're asking them to approve tonight. And those goals and objectives will be posted on the website for the community and we'll update that on a quarterly basis. I think one of the most important things is that it has very specific timetables associated with the goals, what we call objectives. So it's very measurable and hopefully we can make great progress on some of the things that are important for our elected officials in the community.
All right. We have a motion.
I'll make the motion. Mr. Williams brought this forward from his previous experiences and I found this exercise to be very, very useful and the, the diagram will be made available. I don't know if we can put it up for folks to see, but it connects everything up nicely. And it helps people like me understand it better. So thank you, Mr. Williams, for bringing that forward. And I make the motion that we adopt it.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes, sir, straight to caller.
I request a motion for the resolution twenty-two-two dash zero fifty, consolidating maintenance job descriptions within the service department and establishing a step and grade system for maintenance and form of position.
Motion. So.
Oh, yes, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Planning and zoning administrator.
Planning and zoning administrator requests a motion for the board to set a public hearing date for consideration of Davis Nine Mile Development Zone Map Amendment, ZC twenty-two-two oh three. This action was considered at the last zoning commission meeting. And the need for a public hearing for consideration of this PUD amendment is necessary. Now, in your packets, I included four different dates. That would be give staff enough time to advertise within the statutory window. So November thirtieth, December first, December seventh, and December eighth are potential options for consideration.
Summer first.
The thirtieth, did you say? The thirtieth, the first, or the eighth?
Uh, November thirtieth, December first, and then, then December seventh and December eighth.
Oh, seventh or eighth, okay.
Yep.
Um, well, what about the eighth? Eighth sounding guys.
Yep, fine.
Alan.
Mm-hmm.
Work. Time.
What time you want?
Um, so wherever you'd like.
Six, six thirty.
Six o'clock, five thirty.
Any of those.
Six o'clock sounds good. Is that all right? Sounds perfect. December eighth.
Yeah.
All right, Eddie. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I do have a motion on that.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We have any other business?
I'll tell them.
I would like to make a comment in general, having arrived here from the Anderson, Denver.
That we're so much better than those guys. Thank you so much for bringing that up.
And the reason is because you can allow the other for discussion after the business. So that if you brought something up, we can revisit it. They only allow open floor before they discuss any of the business. So you have to be a mind reader to make any comment about business coming up. And or then it's a done deal where you can say. So it's really interesting concept to allow us to revisit some things we might have voted on or talked about or whatever. At the end of the meeting.
Like, we try to do first principles where we do things that are functional, to the best of our ability. All right, anybody else? All right, well, thanks, everybody for, you guys have anything?
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Wait, wait, wait. Sorry.
Yes.
Yeah.
Preferably, you know, you have something, particularly something that's new that you wanna bring to our attention.
Eddie wanted you to give me a little history on this. Water beach trash, refuse with, uh, uh, Rocky.
We're having a meeting with Rocky on Tuesday to review, because we're out of the regular law and my practice, so we're getting, we'll be meeting with him on Tuesday.
How, how does this all go about?
The wasteland.
Yeah.
It was on the ballot, could be renewed within.
It passed.
Okay, I understand. Because what I want to know is ten years ago, what, what, what it about? One or two people, this, uh, put their trash out and you had to go and make up.
So generally speaking, it's a pretty good deal. I think most people came to that conclusion. That's why it passed. You pay, we have a fair amount of leverage, buying power with Rocky, so we can leverage a pretty good rate with them. We can also leverage your guys' services in a better way to the extent that if they're not providing what they said they were gonna provide and you, Joe, whatever resident and so, so and so calls and says, you know, why aren't I getting this? You know, why, why, why aren't, why didn't you make my large item pickup? It's a lot more impactful if we tell them, you know, look, you, you, you hold their feet to the fire for the services they're providing. So I, I, I tried not to be too opinionated on it before, you know, it was voted on, but the residents have spoken and I think it's, it's a good, it's a good deal. It's a lot better rate than you would probably get on your own in almost any.
It's almost three times the cost on your own.
Yep.
There's something in the Ohio revised code that allows you to use this on your own.
Mm-hmm.
Give a number for it.
Yeah, the legal counsel could get it for you.
So on my own, I approached the office of law today. I've been a person who goes down there and asks questions. And then just say, you have to ask questions because if you don't, you're gonna be in the dark in the light of the world. So, uh, one of the people, one of the persons down there gave me a list of stuff that you were through with money for, you got to play. There wasn't a designation for garbage with ten years. So she put it in there, okay? This was like, you know, this was broken down by.
Are you, are you talking about, I'm sorry, sir, just a second. Are you talking about your property specifically?
No, I'm talking about all, entire.
No, we've had a, we've had a waste levy for beyond ten years. It's been, I mean, it's, it's been longer than that.
Two thousand and twelve, according to, uh, uh, you know, whether, whether I answered on the board of elections, to reveal five point three dollars, a tenth of mil for three points rude.
Yeah, this is, I mean, I've been a trustee since two thousand and.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. I think we've gone through it twice now. So that, that tells me right there that it's been at least ten years. Because we do it on a five-year cycle. So it's been, been ten.
I think I've lived in our house since nineteen eighty-one. I never paid trash, but grounds now.
Yeah, okay. I mean, Stan, do you remember? I mean, it, it goes back. I mean, no offense, Stan, I'm not calling you out for being old.
Yeah, all right. So any, anything else?
Oh.
All right.
This, this one law fair, they, and they weren't aware that it was money set aside for trash, I mean, who wouldn't? You know, all of the dogs.
No, we, we can't, we can't, we can't do a levy without the auditor approving it. And then the auditor approves our budget every year. So if they didn't know about it, you probably were talking to the wrong person.
Yeah. So some of the, I mean, some of these technical details you may have to work out perhaps behind the scenes with staff. Yeah, I, I, but I mean, so are you driving at a point, sir? What do you, what do you, what do you wanna, I mean, what do you unhappy about? Do you have something that you wanna?
One, one of the years on them, and they said that they weren't aware of any community government agency, planning money and, and putting money out to do a, a commercial business.
But we don't do it for commercial businesses. That's why. Well, we, we pay, we have a contract with Rocky. I don't know who you talk to, but whoever you talk to will roll.
But if there's a revised code, I'll have the numbers for it.
Okay, well, we can work on that and we're, we're gonna, you know, unless there's anything else. This is a lot of what Tim appreciates about Pierce Township. If we want to continue that, we need to kind of, you know, be sensible with what we discuss here. So I. Okay. All right. Okay, we'll look into it. All right, any, any, any other public comment? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I am, yes. I'll reiterate my motion.
Second. Second.